Oh. He does my. We didn't know if you were interested. But we have.
We've already plotted. I don't wanna leave.
How they formed when we. Then Charles Allen. Had the boys that we always. We had Peter Fly.
Mine's at the house.
Green's going burning sometimes on your next step all over here.
At least don't wanna say hi anyway. Great, how about you guys? Two guys presumably today. Still around.
Volleyballs in the high school. Little boys' football is at the middle school. But volleyball is at six, it's Jocelyn's last game, last JV game. And then the boys probably play at six there. Alright, see you. Or just put it in the, can you put it in the Google Drive for the thing? Yep. Just put it in your, in your department reports, it'll be okay.
How do you back your son? Volleyball's here, football, well. And you're stuck here.
You know, some of the last JV games tonight, and they play early, they'll play at six because. The first, we don't have any.
None of your.
Your hands are playing.
No, your guys could be in your crew.
With him, Taylor's more loud. Standing for class now. First out, because it hurts back, hitting on the shop. Maybe she was on vacation this week, so she didn't pick up. She's got something aggressive. But yeah, we. Wait till I handle. They've been crazy. Time's, time's running out. I took that the other day from my Jeep.
It's pretty hot out there.
Happy, hello? I'm at the board meeting, if you're calling me, I'm done. Where is me? These should break your own neck, living back in it. Who's thinking that? Right now, I could tell who, I read the ocean, but in a few minutes, I'll sit down. Just don't, we don't have, break into two, what did you hear? I hope you're moving there, I keep moving. Does it bother you anything? Um, he's on, then he made it, but. He has a lot of heat, and I'm looking this way, I'm not gonna look in this way. And they come out and tell you. I, I asked, I asked, I was thinking. That's the first thing you should tell the crisis that.
Yeah, that's a good one. So we're starting this by, this is what we're asking. Do we understand this?
Yes.
Now, I'm familiar with that. So. People. The eyes, well, people coming in, they have to go through. Now business. Since those are emerging, I do some social, but.
Board of Education, it's always great to see everyone here. Uh, we love seeing visitors, especially our kiddos when they get to come, so, uh. That is a treat for us, for sure, but, uh. I would like to call this meeting to order, and the first thing on our agenda is a moment of silent prayer. Amen. Item one B is a roll call, uh, Miss Misty is not gonna be here tonight, and, uh, let the minutes reflect that. Miss Ann is gonna be a few minutes late, okay? Also, item one C is the reading the board team commitments, and I've asked Miss Angie if she would read those for us tonight.
To improve our effectiveness, the board team for Rockcastle County Schools commits to review processes and experiences to identify and direct improvements. Continuously define and work toward long-term goals which serve all students of the district. Make each decision based on facts and the best for all students. Listen to each other and speak freely. Work together, support each other, and not surprise one another. Discuss board deliberations to point to mutually agreeable resolution based on factual information. Support the majority's decision, projecting board unity towards shared goals for continuously improving district-wide student learning. Operate without personal or political agendas. Respect one another, agree to disagree respectfully. Delegate implementation to superintendent and education teams, and to respectfully remind each other of these commitments.
Thank you, Miss Angie. Item two is to adopt the agenda, we need, we need to make an amendment to our agenda tonight, we need to add a five G. Which is going to be approve the NASV value point FMV lease agreement, okay? Uh, Miss Carrie can explain that a little bit further when we get to that part, okay? So.
So to approve the agenda as amended.
Alright, question, all in favor? Item three is our public comment, I'm not aware of anything, Miss Carrie, or you, currently tonight, okay? We always welcome the public, if you have any concerns, we'd like you to know that you are welcome here, and just reach out to Miss Carrie, or Miss Jenny, and, uh, Prior. And we can put you on the agenda to bring the address you need to make. Uh, item four is our school and community showcase, and we would like to welcome Miss Willis, so, welcome.
Hi, thank you all for having us tonight, tonight I have brought Miss Hillary Whitaker and our FFA officers for this school year. Uh, but I just wanna say, we have had a fantastic start to the school year at middle school. Uh, we are almost, our first nine weeks completed, and that is hard to believe. Uh, but, these kiddos are gonna show some of the hard work that they're doing in our FFA club.
Good evening, like, uh, Miss Willis said, I am Miss Hillary Whitaker, and I'm just so grateful to have the opportunity to come and share just a little about our, our CMS FFA chapter. Um, since our chapter began in twenty twenty-one, we've continued to grow from just a few, uh, members to over seventy members this year who are, um. Have turned in permission forms to actively participate in our program. Um, so the first thing I'm gonna do is introduce, um, these guys behind me, our officer team this year. Um, so first, we have Miss Kaylee Cash, who is our president. Um, Mr. Drew Diehouse is our vice president. We have Mr. Clay Cash is our secretary. Treasurer is Miss Courtney Coy, and then our reporter Autumn Binge couldn't be here tonight. Uh, but we have our sentinel Lucas Hayes, and then, um, committee chairman, uh, Xavier Stalsworth, and we have another committee chairman, uh, Andrew King, who could also not be here. Um, but since these guys were elected in May, they have, um, been off to a great start, kinda planning, um, and implementing things for our chapter. And I'm gonna turn it over to them to let them share a little bit about what we've been doing, but I'm just so proud of them and their leadership and all of the hard work that they've been putting in. So, I'm gonna turn things over to Kaylee first, who's gonna talk about state convention.
This past June, we had eight members attend the state FFA convention in Lexington. While there, we had the opportunity to network with other FFA members from across the state. Visit various college and career booths at the Career Fair and Expo, and attend a leadership workshop where we learned about how to become a better communicator and leader. We also had several members compete and excel in various team and individual contests. Our quiz bowl team made it to the final four. It's, our team members were Sadie Payne, Kaylee Holcomb, Kaylee Cash, and Ben Coliff, who's tied for high individual. Our opening and closing ceremony ceremonies team consists of Ben Coliff, Kaylee Holcomb, Michaela Wagers, Sadie Payne, and Callie Thacker, and Drew Diehouse. Sadie Payne also competed in the prepared public speaking contest. Callie Thacker submitted an essay for the essay contest, as you can see, state convention was a success.
In July, six of our members, officers had the opportunity to attend FFA camp for middle school chapters at the Kentucky FFA Leadership Training Center in Hartonsburg, Kentucky. While there, we met lots of other members from across the state. We participated in officer classes where we learned about the duties of our specific officers, completed, and completed a service project where we planted a tree at a chapter. Attended several leadership workshops, hiked to the big tree, and even got to practice some team building exercises as an officer team on the level ropes course. We worked very hard to plan and set chapter goals for the upcoming year. In addition to these learning experiences, we participated in Ag Olympics, chapter volleyball, and kickball tournaments, and a scaptride. There was a lot of fun and learning packed into these three days, overall, FFA camp was a great team building experience for our officer team.
Last year was the first year of that our chapter held monthly club meetings at our school. We averaged around thirty to thirty-five members attending each month. Some of the activities we did at our meetings were pumpkin painting, two-minute, minute-to-win games, making Valentine's for the nursing homes, a movie night, and Ag Olympics. Our first club meeting this year was held on September the twenty-eighth, and we had fifty members in attendance. Members completed an Ag Olympics event, and everyone had a great time. We have lots of fun activities planned for our future meetings and wait to see our members.
Some things our FFA chapter is excited about in the coming months are continuing our monthly meetings, discovering through Greece and running this November, so we'll have an FFA weekend February. And collaborating with our high, high school FFA chapter.
So, in addition to our FFA chapter, I also wanted to highlight some of the things going on in our agri-science classes. Um, so, students in our agri-science classes have been really busy learning many things related to the different ag career pathways. Um, so some activities you can see pictures of, um, on the slide have ranged from learning construction skills like measuring and hammering, uh, making butter to conclude our dairy unit in our sixth grade class. Um, learning to read a nutrition label and, um, using that information to help make healthy food choices, constructing edible soil profiles, and dissecting flowers to learn about the functions of flowerparks. Um, and I also just really love the opportunity to teach the majority of our students in our school every year, and really look forward to seeing their knowledge and appreciation, uh, for the ag industry growth throughout their time in my class. So, thank you all so much for having us, and if you have any questions, I'm sure these guys, they might answer some questions. You can answer any questions that you have, if you have it. But thank you.
You guys amaze me, Miss Willis, you know. It's hard to beat that.
I know. So, we're really proud of the work that they're doing, and Miss Whitaker's putting into this, I mean, if you can tell fifty members that showed up to the first meeting for the year, that's a lot. And that is without everybody coming back and telling how much fun they had and everything that they've done to get more in, in FFA. But that's just one of the many programs that we offer our middle schools, we've got choir, we've got drama, we have music, we have all kinds of different opportunities for our kids, 'cause in middle school, you know that. They're trying to find their niche and where they fit in, so while we push academics, and that is our focus while we're there, eight to three every day, but we also offer lots of opportunities for kids to figure out what else that they want to do and what makes them, them.
So, the club that they were talking, is that an after-school?
Mm-hmm, this is all after-school.
Okay.
So we will really, uh, be picking up also, when we have, uh, ESS and those opportunities also, and more kids will be able to say once we offer that transportation also. Yeah, yeah, bigger numbers, Steve. Yes, absolutely.
Well, thank you. You didn't even act nervous, speaking on present. You got it down to the nards already.
They were very, I was gonna say, they were very nervous.
Thank you all, thank you to the parents who, uh.
Well, I just wanna say enough, like, us three, we have children that are also not, they have grown up in four H, and I know Matt can speak on that behalf, and, you know, we have one that, um, produces beef, we have, um, horses, uh, they get involved with. Other activities, the shooting sports and so forth, and I know at least four of them over here are with Matt on, um, the other teams.
They still turn out okay.
Did not grow up in FFA. But you know, I mean, I, I think, um, children of those have older children that I wish they could have had an FFA in middle school, so they, they could have had a head start. And I know my kids has all the time, I wish they had that when I was in middle school, because that really gives, you know, our kids a head start on SAE projects and things like that, so.
It's a lot more than agriculture.
Yeah, how many middle school programs are there in the state? Yeah, so that's really impressive, I think.
That's wonderful.
Yes, yes, so congrats.
Thank you, thank you all so much. Thank you, Miss Willis, I guess you're going back to the middle school?
Yeah.
We've got a ballgame.
Yeah. I'll be there soon. Item five is our operations in action, so, um. The five G, Miss, uh.
Yes.
Carrie, do you wanna explain that addition?
Yes, that's just, um, that is enabling, um, Roundstone Elementary to renew a lease agreement to have a postage meter outside, so. A renewal of the lease.
I move to approve operations and actions.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Item six A, review and approve the monthly financial reports, Miss Jenny.
Yes, um. Monthly financial reports for, um, the month of, um, September, if you had the opportunity to review those, if you have any questions, we'll be glad to, to review those with you. Um, you'll note that, um, we had a brief discussion last month that the CD funds, um, are reflected in our construction account. Um, along with the interest, so, um, that is reflected on the balance sheet as well.
Anyone have any questions for Miss Jenny at this time? I know she's a phone call away, if anyone ever needs anything.
Yes, absolutely, anytime. Mike and Marsha, go please.
Second.
All in favor? Item six B, a review and approve the schematic design package for the Rockcastle County High School paving and ADA ramp project, BG two-four dash oh-nine-seven.
Man, so it's me again.
It's you.
I'm back, it is good to be here, I, I really enjoyed the FFA presentation, I was really curious what edible soil profiling is.
Yeah.
Uh, chocolate pudding. It's Oreo crumb.
I was very interested. I didn't know what you got to come up to over here.
We're high expectations today.
We have revenue from school center.
You've blown my mind at least twice. There was one, number two is this staplless paper adhesive that you've come up with, so. I really feel like Rockcastle's on the cutting edge.
Another way to save money.
Okay, so um, I have the joy, the pleasure to present to you some site improvement and traffic studies for the high school. So, we can just kinda get into it. This, this is kind of a nuts and bolts type project. I don't think we're gonna blow anybody's minds design-wise, but I think this is a great project that could really help the district. We'll kinda illustrate it as we go through. So this is your campus as you know it, and of course, you're very familiar with it. Um, we've just kinda highlighted a few key areas, number one being the actual building, um, two being your main traffic entry, and we think, um, we use, it's kind of a harsh word, Chris, to say inefficient. But, we think we can help you a bit there.
Thank you.
Number three, you have a restricted visitor parking and parent drop-off area. Um, it's a little congested. We think we could maybe help you a bit there too. And then at number four, you have um, kind of a main drop-off hub um, where you have some concrete steps that have, that have weathered and they're a little worn. Uh, we think we can help you a bit there. And then five, some student parking, and then you have a sneaky little exit road there in the back um, that we were very interested to observe. It was number six. So, we spied on you with permission, and um, your security is amazing because after we've made about two loops through the parking lot, they come out and check us, so they are doing their job. Um, we've been checked anytime we've interacted with this building. But we did come and with permission, we flew a drone um, and just observed how the traffic pattern works um, in the afternoon. So about two-twenty PM up in the upper left-hand corner, um, that's before the action really starts, but you can see the general parking um, in the back. You know, a lot of high schoolers park in that back parking lot, and then a lot of people fight for that front parking lot. And then there's some cafeteria folks and then other folks that sneak and park kind of in that side parking lot there where the kind of loading dock is. Around a little later, you'll see uh, that parent traffic starts to stack on the shoulder of Highway four-sixty-one. Um, and you guys are very familiar with that. Um, we don't know exactly everything you do, but what we've observed is they start to stack there and we think they are, they hang there just to yield to the buses and get position. At around two-forty, we observe that your buses begin to stack in the bus loop. And the parents on Highway four-sixty-one continue to stack, so that you see that line continuing to extend on back of the highway. And you see, you know, I know the pictures are small, but the buses are beginning to stack there in front of um, the exit. Um, all buses are in place and the parents on the shoulder of the highway are at max capacity around two-fifty. At two-fifty-five, parent traffic somehow, we don't know how you do it, but somehow you signal those folks to ease on up behind the buses. We don't know if they.
It's telepathic.
It is.
Okay. Again, Rockcastle continues to. But they begin to um, kinda funnel in there behind the buses. And around two-fifty-seven, parent traffic moves in as students are released from the classes.
Probably that guy that stopped you in the parking lot.
Um, parents begin queuing behind the bus traffic in the bus loop. So, your bus loop does function very well and it handles the capacity as best we could observe. Um, so you're blessed with a really nice site design there, but you can see all the buses are stacked up and queued and then the, the parents are kind of circled in there behind them. Um, around three, a little after three, the bus loop is all queued and waiting as students exit the building. Around a couple minutes later, buses begin to stack in the bus loop and the parents on Highway four-sixty-one continue to stack on the shoulder of. Five minutes after three, student traffic begins to exit the site converging with existing traffic from the bus loop to turn left on four-sixty-one. Another thing that we couldn't quite figure out, and we don't know how you do it, but it seemed that people were programmed. If they were gonna turn right on four-sixty-one, they took the sneaky road out the back. If they were gonna turn left, they went to the main entrance to catch the light. We don't know if you tell them to do that.
They're not allowed to turn left if they go up the sneaky road.
Okay, interesting, but everyone followed the rules. It was amazing to watch it. So we're just, we're trying to learn you and we think we're close. That's what we observed. Next slide. This is kind of our proposal. This is all very rough, um, just, you know, just cons- concept. But number one, again, is the building. Number two, um, we think, and not all these ideas are our ideas, a lot of it's, you know, Mr. Clark and Dr. Ballinger and others, we've talked about it, but this is our first rough step. Um, we think you could benefit by widening um, the area at number two to create kind of a shoulder to allow the parents to queue up off of the highway. It would relieve a little pressure off of those cars. We probably would be best served to avoid negotiating with the state for additional um, ingress. So what we are gonna propose to you is, even though we show it in red going all the way to the highway, we'll clip it short of the highway where you still have the ingress that you have, but then you'll have a new shoulder area that they can kind of pull into and, and hide out at. Um, number three, we want to work on this parking lot just a bit. Um, we may be able to widen it, work on the landscaping and, and uh, maybe still just a little bit of the green space um, to let that parking lot breathe some. Uh, number four, we want to work on those stairs. So we have proposed to go to build new stairs and use a concrete admixture which would resist salt. Um, and again, none of these technologies are perfect or whatever, but would, I think you would see an improvement in the lifespan of the concrete if we can resist that salt. Um, and also at number five, we want to add an ADA sidewalk so that your um, bus drop-off is more ADA-friendly. So these are some things we've identified thus far. And what we hope to do is to put together a menu. We're gonna price a lot of these things individual, uh, individually, so that we can present them to you and you can pick um, kind of based off a menu um, based on your, you know, priority and the costing that we get in the end. So, and I think we're good there. There's one more thing I'd like to show you, so um, again, this is the first time we've ever presented this, but we're trying to move quickly. Um, we've done a lot of the groundwork, so the survey is complete. You can see proof of progress there. This um, is just what you have, nothing shocking. Um, the next one does not have all the pieces where we would quite like them to be, but we just wanted to prove progress that, you know, the technical work is underway. And you can begin to see where we worked in uh, placing that new shoulder um, on the road there. And we're still working on the ramps and the stairs and some of those things, but that will come, you know, in the next draft. That's where we stand at the moment. We've.
Will that be one lane wide on the shoulder or two?
Um, we're showing it one at the moment. We'll keep exploring it.
Not that the trees are, are holy or anything, but they're, things can go much wider than one way and you're gonna have to cut those trees, which are a very nice, they look good.
That's all, that's our intention, so preserve it. So anyway, a lot of this is just proving progress and the proof that we've launched. Um, we've corresponded with KDB some, moving some things around up there and their systems are a little bit different than we've been used to in the past. So, we don't know what tier of project this is. And depending on the tier that we're assigned, it depends how many times we have to come back to you for presentations. So, it may turn out that we didn't even really need this one, but we just asked to be put on the agenda and just to show you that we've launched and we would just like to check the box of seeking a schematic approval just in case we need it on deadline. Um, we would like to come back next month and present construction drawings uh, just to keep the momentum, and that's when we'll seriously check the boxes of this design and have it buttoned up.
You had, you had mentioned the sneaky route out that they um, no, no change to that? I mean, I'm just asking, no, okay.
None of, none of this stuff.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions?
Ms. Harry, do you have any to do the same thing for?
We need to approve.
We need to approve this and then do the Mount Vernon, same thing.
Motion approved.
All in favor?
Yes.
Item six C is review and approve the schematic design package for Mount Vernon Elementary paving project, BG two-four dash zero-nine-six.
Yes ma'am, so no slideshow for this one. This one is essentially, we're gonna put documents together um, to pour new asphalt um, for that facility. Uh, so no real big design changes, just we're gonna freshen it up. Correct.
I should do it really bad.
Motion for approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your candidacy, that's fun. Item six D is review and approve the adoption of the board resolution authorizing the Rockcastle County School District Finance Corporation to issue the bonds and to enter into a lease with the corporation. Resolution of the Board of Education of Rockcastle County, Kentucky confirming the acceptance of an offer of assistance from the Kentucky School Facilities Construction Commission, authorizing and approving the execution of a participation agreement with said commission, authorizing and approving the execution of a lease agreement with the Rockcastle County School District Finance Corporation and any further necessary instruments. Approving certain architects' plans for the construction of a certain school building project and approving the plan of financing the cost of said project. So, it is my understanding that we have to recess from our existing meeting.
First, we have to approve this, that the finance corp, that this board can enter into an agreement with the finance corporation, so we need to approve six D.
Approve six D, which is allowing us to go into a finance commission, you know.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, now, seven, we need a motion to recess.
Recess.
All right. All in favor? And now, I need to call the meeting of the Rockcastle County School District Finance Corporation to order. Uh, that's the first thing on the agenda for it. The second thing is to confirm the corporation officers and members. We did this prior. So uh, does anyone have any questions about that? No. Item three, approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Which is in your packet.
Yes, they are in your folder.
So we need a motion to approve this.
Motion approved.
All in favor?
Yes.
Item four, consider adopting a resolution for the issuance of bonds. And I guess I need to read this to you again. Okay, it's a good thing I've got my glasses off so I can see it tonight, I guess. A resolution of the Board of Directors of the Rockcastle County School District Finance Corporation relating to and providing for the issuance of not to exceed one million dollars principal amount subject to a decrease in an amount determined by the board to be in the best interest of the corporation of school-building revenue bonds in accordance with sections fifty-eight point one-eight-zero and one-sixty-two point one-two-zero through one-sixty-two point three-zero-zero and one-sixty-two point three-eight-five of the Kentucky revised statutes to provide funds for school-building purposes, providing and determining the duty of said funds, wait, I've lost my spot, of said corporation in connection with the operation of the school property, the creation of the funds they mature, and the creation of adequate maintenance and insurance funds, and authorizing the execution of a lease of such foregoing property to the Board of Education of Rockcastle County, Kentucky.
I would approve the resolution.
Thank you, I said that. All in favor?
Yes.
Item five, approval of engagement letter with Stecto and Johnson.
So that is also in your packet.
Does anyone have any questions for that?
No. Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adjourn out of the Rockcastle County School District Finance Corporation meeting.
Motion's approved, second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to reconvene the Board of Education meeting. Jenny Ellis, did you get all of that?
Got it.
All right, we're good to go then.
You're a rotten real star.
Thank you very much. Item nine, review superintendent's personnel action report. I was just curious how many, uh, do we have any posted positions right now?
Um, we have a opening that we have a, a speech-language pathologist that we have just posted today. And we have a um, FMD classroom at Mount Vernon Elementary that we have still not been able to fill, but we have plans to fill that with a long-term sum with a, of a retired teacher. So, and that was very completely staff.
Next on our agenda is our department reports. We have copies of all of that in our drive. I did want to ask um, Mr. Rupert about the attendance. Um, is that about what you were kind of thinking?
Yeah, we're uh, you can see the, the comparison from last year, so we are up about a percent, three-tens, something like that, from, from last year, so that's good.
It's been down.
It's, it's, it's trending, trending good. Last couple days, I'd like to have been a little better coming back from fall break, but, but it's an improvement. Uh, middle school and high school won the uh, KDB, KDPP Region thirteen high attendance again for large high school and large middle school. So we'll have certificates from them. When they present that, it'll be, you know, we'll be willing to do that.
And I had a question for Ms. Jenny too, uh, you had, you had put on there about a grant. Um, that's one point, was it three yearly for how many years?
It's three.
Is that something?
Annually, yes.
Is that something that you think that we're, we're standing a good chance to get?
I do, I do think we have a very good chance. Rockcastle County Schools has many um, areas in place. We are in a position to expand upon dual credit, um, positive learning experiences uh, for our students and um, I think that the data that we've uh, pulled together in cooperation with um, Mr. Sherman Cook and Mr. J.D. Bustle um, at their respective schools is very much in an excellent position for that federal grant. It will be very competitive. We're excited about it.
Yeah. That's fine.
So that will be submitted on Thursday.
And how long is the turnabout to hear about it and then turn around?
I don't know that I, I don't know anyone's that old, I'm no pastor. What's your name, that?
Ms. Jenny.
Jenny, okay.
Thanks, Ms. Jenny. Anyone have any questions for anyone under department reports?
No.
I appreciate all of your hard work. Thank you all so much. Ms. Harry, what do you have for us?
Um, I have two things. One, I want, I know that you all have received an email today from KSBA and tomorrow there is a luncheon learn. If anyone is available to attend that tomorrow, there is a lady, her name is Janet Beth, and she is absolutely excellent in instruction and she's leading that tomorrow. That just caught my eye today and I thought if anybody can, has availability to jump on that. You do, in that email, it gives you directions on how to um, register. So if you're interested and want to do that, let me or Jenny Ellis know and we can help. But that would probably be a really beneficial session if anybody's interested. Um, second thing I wanna comment, um, we have uploaded the final document for our community-based accountability action plan. We uploaded that, uploaded that into your board resources. It's not in tonight's documents, but just board reset, resources, so take a look at that. That is um, the combination of a lot of work from a lot of people. Um, of course, we have seven pillar teams, the, the department heads are the chairs of those pillar teams. And we've had about sixty-five um, people participating in that work. Um, so it's been really well received in our community and it's really leading our action plan and what we are doing this school year. So I would like for, you know, to take a look and then also just give a shout-out to every, all of our staff and our community members, parents, students. We've had a, a vast number of people that have participated and so we had some really great discussions. I know Anna has, was able to attend a couple and Angie and Matt and some really great discussions and, and it's, it's just good work and it's listening and, and listening to what our community wants out of Rockcastle County Schools. And if they're sending a student there, what do they expect us to be doing? So it's been really great. Um, we will, we, our next step in this process is coming back together in um, December and we will, we will look at where we are and, and our action planning and how we've progressed and what areas we need to continue to grow in. And so it'll be a year-long process, but really proud of the work that everybody's done. So, I should take time to take a look and review all of that. And Ms. Savannah Sweet, I'm gonna have her put this, this on our website so everyone is able to see it.
Four comments, ma'am, do you have any?
I think it's principal appreciation month, so appreciate all of our principals and whoever's been doing the social media highlights about them, I think that's been really positive, so.
Well, I'll just say what he said. Thank you. I'm honored to say that.
Only thing I have is I just wanna send out thanks to everyone. Appreciate you and I know you work very hard. And hopefully fall break was a little bit of a break for you. I have no idea if it was. Sorry to rush this meeting along, but I have a little girl that's getting ready to cheer and vogue, so I need a motion to adjourn. Y'all have a good night.